This meeting has come to order. We have a couple of housekeeping items to get done before we go to the voting meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 9, 2017. This is a board meeting of the Haciapca Community Facilities District. Roll call, please.
Chairman Oberg.
Here.
Member Lamerson.
Here.
Member Blair.
Yes.
Member Lizelle.
Here.
Member Orr.
Here.
Member Shiska.
Here.
Member Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Item A.
Approval of minutes for the Haciapca Community Facilities District Board Meeting held on July 12, 2016. So this one just requires a motion to approve the minutes.
Mayor, I move to approve the Haciapca Community Facilities District Board Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second. Motion and second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item B.
Consideration and possible adoption of Resolution Number 44 for the Haciapca Community Facilities District authorizing the sale and issuance of special assessment lien refunding bonds, Series 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick recap, we talked about this back in July when we adopted the budget for this year for the districts. With the 2016 state legislative session, they allowed legislation to enable us to refund special assessment bonds. As you may recall, the Haciapca Community Facilities District was formed in 1996 to further improvements in the district and the wastewater plant and other things needed up there. It was, all these improvements were paid for by assessment bonds which have levies assessed on each of the properties out there. Now that we can refund them, we're able to simplify the administration of the districts. The bonds that were issued were relatively complex with the nominations for refunding, reserve requirements, and other things which have caused problems over the years as we administered the bond, or the district. And it also enables us to take advantage of the lower interest rate now. The original bond had a 7.75% interest rate up there, and our preliminary bids show the new bond will have about a 2.7% interest rate. It'll make it much simpler for administration. So, again, this will only affect the properties up there that still have outstanding levies. There's only about 250 remaining up there that still have an assessment due. So their future payments will go down as a result of this, and the more simple bond structure will enable us to administer the district much more effectively. We did not extend the date of the district. The district will still be completed July 1 of 2021. So, other than that, the bonds, again, the rate and the amount of the bonds in the memo are just preliminary. As we get the final payment for the May payment that's due right now, the whole issue will be completed later in this month, and this action today authorizes the refunding and enables me as a district treasurer to proceed and make the final decisions and complete the bond transactions. With that, I'd be glad to answer any specific questions.
Questions, comments from the council? Well, I think it's always nice whenever we can save Prescott money and not send it to New York, a bunch of business suits, so I'm glad we got the lower, the lower rate. Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 44.
Second. Motion and second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
This meeting is adjourned. This is a board meeting of the Haciapca Community Facilities District Number Two. This is Tuesday, May 9, 2017. Roll call, please.
Chairman Oberg.
Here.
Member Lamerson.
Here.
Member Blair.
Yes.
Member Lizelle.
Here.
Member Orr.
Here.
Member Shiska.
Here.
Member Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item 3A, please.
Approval of minutes for the Haciapca Community Facilities District Number Two Board Meeting held on July 12, 2016.
Questions, comments? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the Haciapca Community Facilities District Number Two Board Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second. Do you have a vote, second vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
Item 3B.
Public hearing and adoption of Resolution Number 20 for the Haciapca Community Facilities District Number Two approving an amended feasibility report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we were going through the District Number Two, which is a much smaller district than the initial Haciapca District, again, it's related and next to the other district, we were reconciling to go through this district, and we saw that there was a small amount of bond proceeds of the original issue that had not been spent on the improvements identified in the original feasibility report. So we met with Public Works to identify needed improvements up in that area, and they identified some intersection improvements at Thumbute Lane and Haciapca Boulevard, I believe that's the name of the road, to use this 190, approximately 190,000 of money that still remained. So this is the public hearing to getting a public comment, and then, of course, the resolution following that is to adopt an amended feasibility report to allow that project to, those funds to be used for that project.
Any comments, questions? Do you have a motion?
You.
We need a public hearing.
Yes, this is a public hearing, so we should go.
Okay. Do I have any comments from the public?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Do I have a second motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 20.
Second.
Yeah, I have a motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
3C.
Consideration and possible adoption of Resolution Number 21 for the Haciapca Community Facilities District Number Two authorizing the sale and issuance of special assessment lien refunding bonds, Series 2017.
Mr. Chairman, this, this item is the same as the one we did in the previous district, much smaller district even from the get-go. This one only has about 30 assessments remaining on it. The actual total amount of the refunding bond is going to be closer to 150,000. Again, the final maturity date will not be moved. It will remain at July 1 of 2024. And again, as we complete this transaction later in May, this action gives me the ability as district treasurer to complete the transaction and then redo the assessments onto the properties. And again, it will only affect the properties that still have assessments outstanding. Those who've paid off earlier are not involved in this transaction. This whole deal is just for the remaining assessments, and there's only about 30 properties remaining in this district with assessments. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, comments from the council? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 21.
Second. Do you have a motion, second vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
This meeting is adjourned. We'll move on to the voting meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 9, 2017. This is a voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. Mayor Protem, do you have any introductions?
No, sir.
Thank you. Our invocation today would be by Rabbi Jessica Rosenthal from Temple Breath Salon, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Orr.
Dear God, on this day of meeting, help our council members and our representatives find you in their doubts, in their questions, in their struggles to fulfill the needs of the community. Help them to find the words to stir each other's souls, open their hearts to the possible and the improbable. Help them to find the human and divine in their colleagues, their constituents, and in themselves. Instill within them your wisdom and guidance that they may be a beacon of hope and a body of action and positive impact within our community today and beyond, and together we say, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Blair.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lizelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Shiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. City Manager, do we have any announcements?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll move on to proclamations.
We have proclamation, May 14 through the 20th, 2017, as National Police Week. We have Sherri Hammond and Lieutenant Rich Gill and Kevin Parlet.
You guys want to join us?
Absolutely.
Nice to have you guys here.
What an honor this is for me. National Police Week, May 14 through 20th, 2017, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated the week of May 14 through the 20th, 2017, as National Police Week, and May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And whereas the police officers of the city of Prescott play an essential role in the safeguarding of the rights and freedoms of citizens and visitors. Whereas it is important for all citizens to know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, sacrifices of their law enforcement officers, and that police officers recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Whereas their selflessness is shared by the families who willingly accept loved ones' absences on holidays and special occasions so that the community will be protected. Whereas the police officers of the city of Prescott have worked devotedly and selflessly on behalf of the people of this city regardless of the peril or the hazard to themselves. Now therefore, I, Harry B. Oberg, Mayor of the city of Prescott, do acknowledge the dedication and professional services given by the men and women who night and day stand guard in our community, do hereby recognize the week of May 14 through the 20th, 2017 as National Police Week. I'd like to also announce that we will be lighting up the city hall blue during that week, so, thank you.
Okay. Well, first of all, Mayor, Council, I'd like to just extend a thanks for having this proclamation, and Sherri Hannah also for being here. A lot of people will remember her husband as John Hannah as an officer, and I want to spend a special thanks. I remember when I was a rookie officer, he, he wasn't my trainer, but was the training officer. If I was about to mess something up, he'd kind of give me the, behind the training officer, so I certainly want to extend thanks for you being here and doing that as well. So, and I think we all, you know, we see the news today that it can be very trying to be a police officer during these times, but I can guarantee you that people standing up here and the rest of the Prescott Police Department is dedicated, motivated, and just happy to serve. And thanks again for allowing, you know, having this declaration. We appreciate it. Okay? Thanks.
B, proclamation, May 21 through the 27th, 2017, as Emergency Medical Service Week, and that will be presented by Chief Light.
Chief, if you want to bring whoever else up. Mark?
Good evening. If the folks from Lifeline, MyCrews, and any other EMS providers that provide lifesaving capabilities in the pre-hospital setting could join us up here, please.
This must be Public Safety Week.
The week after. Oh, okay. Yeah.
I have in my hot little hands a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week, May 21 through 27, 2017. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. Did I miss anybody?
No.
Whereas the members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, Harry Oberg, Mayor of the city of Prescott, in recognition of this event, does hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2017, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Strong, Always in Service. The mayor encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Chief?
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, members of council, just a few folks up here, Lifeline Ambulance represented along with Prescott Fire. Also, two components that aren't able to join us this afternoon are Dr. Lampy and Rob Barth, who coordinate our pre-hospital services in the hospital ER, along with Native Air. It's really a consortium of the best and the most appropriate response for this community, and it's through the folks that are up here, those that are out in the field today, that we're able to provide this service with the economies of scale always in mind. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our presentation.
A, 2017 Annual Granite Creek Cleanup Update presented by Michael Byrd.
Thank you for the opportunity to present. My name is Michael Byrd, and I'm the Executive Director of Prescott Creeks Preservation Association. I wanted to just share a little bit of information about the Granite Creek Cleanup Event for this year and some of its history over the last 11 years that Prescott Creeks has led the event. Just a little bit of background about Prescott Creeks, we're a nonprofit here in this community. We've been here since 1990 and currently have a mission to achieve healthy watersheds and clean waters in central Arizona. The cleanup is an event that has been going on for some time, and our organization has only run the event since 2007. As you can see by the slide here, we believe it started sometime in the late 80s. We're not quite sure what that date was. Somebody knows and can help us get a number up there, we sure would appreciate it. But for all those years, the event was run through a city-sponsored committee called Keep Prescott Beautiful, and they did a great job with that event, getting folks out every year, getting a lot of trash and refuse out of our 60 miles of creeks that we have here in this community. In 2006, they approached Prescott Creeks and asked if they could pass the baton. The folks who were on that committee, I think the average age was pushing about 80, and they had all done it for a lot of years, and so we were happy to take that event on. And our initial goals for the event were really pretty baseline. We wanted to keep it as a great community event, and we wanted to increase participation. So this year, the event was on Earth Day. Typically, it's been about the third weekend of April every year, and we've always tried to put it on the closest day to Earth Day because getting out and cleaning up the creeks is an Earth Day type of activity. This particular year was quite, quite a busy weekend with Chalk It Up and the Earth Day Celebration and Firewise, and we still enjoyed a pretty healthy, healthy participation. Over the 11 years that we've run the event, we've seen over 5,000 people participate, and one of the things we do is we try to quantify the value of that community labor. For this event, it's just so we can know what the numbers are, but sometimes with our grants, we have to report those numbers. But it's a pretty impressive number, 100, almost $110,000 over 11 years. You can see in this table as well that the first year we did it, attendance was down significantly. We were under 200 people. But over the years, the, the attendance has, has increased. We saw our big year in 2012 with 650 people, and then we've been in kind of the 5, 550 range for a number of years now. So this year, we had 550, and then again, you can see how that labor really adds up over the years. Kind of a results of what those people have collected over the years. We started tracking and trying to understand how much, how much has come in at a variety of different categories. This year, we saw 2.7 tons, and that actually represented an increase after four years of decreasing trash and debris coming in. And so as we went through those four years, we were kind of scratching our heads saying, okay, where's all the trash going? Have we actually done our job and we've reduced the amount of trash out there? I'll talk a little bit about our response for that, but I think the waste coming in has been our primary measure of success over the years. About 2011, we added recycle. Those numbers have not been nearly as significant as the waste coming out. For a couple of years, we have also looked at upcycling, where can we take some of the materials that we've collected and get those out of the waste stream? The primary thing that we did with those was we ran sort of a trash into art event that we called One Man's Treasure. Haven't done that for two years now, as we believe we got through most of kind of the big metal junk, which seemed to be the easiest to turn into art. And then every year, we count tires as well. We saw a decrease over the last couple of years, and then this year, the number was back up. So we're, we're trying to understand as we go along. Just a graphic here that shows kind of how the waste collection and the participation has moved over the years. As you can see, this goes only through 2016 because I was not smart enough to update the table with 2017 numbers. But it's, it's been a great event. Each year, we go out and we reach out to the local business community, get sponsors to help us cover the cost. This year, we had 35, which I think was up a couple from last year. We were somewhere just over, just over 30 sponsors, and that's everything from cash, our big sponsors, Unisource, and Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe this year, and then we have a lot of folks who provide in-kind services, just arbitrarily, Nick's Feed Your Face, he supplies some sandwiches to feed to the volunteers toward the end of the event. So a good, good showing of a pretty broad cross-section of the community. This year, we looked at the cleanup a little bit differently than we have in previous years because last year, we had under a ton of trash that came in, and we said, okay, well, what's going on? Are our volunteers not working as hard? Are we just giving them a T-shirt to go out and take a hike for two hours? We don't think that was the case, but we wanted to really try to refine what we were doing. One thing that we did was we focused on the downtown area where that seems to be there's a lot of trash. That's where we have our downtown Greenway Trail that gets a lot of public usage, and so we focused in the downtown area. The other thing that we did was we really tried to reduce the burden on the city solid waste division. As you can see, we had 35 drop-off locations in the past, and with our focus on the downtown area, we were able to almost cut that in half to 18 drop locations. And I think overall, that worked fairly well. But I think the real exciting part for us is we added additional projects. It wasn't just about picking up trash this year. We had a couple of stewardship projects, trail maintenance projects, and had those in the downtown area as well as out at Watson Woods Riparian Preserve. It was our first year for doing that coupled with the cleanup. We've, we've had lots of people out at Watson Woods. I know that George does a great job getting folks out on the trails with Chris Hosking, but it was our first time combining efforts with the cleanup, and so there's a lot to learn. We'll, we'll continue looking at that as an opportunity for this event, try to hone that and get greater participation over time. And so just to kind of wrap things up, one of the things that we did was we put together the numbers that in terms of the city investment, the, just over $20,000 over 11 years is kind of an estimate on our basis. It's just been over the last two years that we've gotten good numbers from solid waste. But the city's put in about 20,000, and between our volunteer labor, sponsorships, in-kind amounts, and then our special events with One Man's Treasure, we've been able to bring about $240,000 to the event and to making our community a better place. And so we kind of looked at that and said, okay, that's a, that's a 12 to 1 ratio with what Prescott Creeks is bringing to the table versus what the city is bringing to the table. And we were kind of excited by that number. We hadn't looked at it before, but it's, you know, hopefully we can continue to improve upon that over time. Lots getting done by a lot of community members, and over time, we really want to expand on that. The picture here was taken by a volunteer, Ashley Darling, and that's right downtown. It's a beautiful stretch of, I believe that's Granite Creek, where we've got red willows and grasses and flow, and it's, it's just fantastic. So I think this event is about getting folks out to do their part in stewarding our natural resources and also making the community a better, better place. So before I, before I wrap up, I think in particular, I wanted to extend special thanks to Will Black over at Solid Waste. His team was phenomenal throughout the event. We met with them in February, kind of went over the logistics of how to make it happen most efficiently for everyone. And then we also worked with Joe Baines and, and his team over at Parks and Recreation. The event's hosted out of Granite Creek Park, has been for as long as I can remember, longer than the 11 years that Prescott Creeks has, has done the event. George Sheets was great to work with in planning some of the, the trail projects, and then I think a big hand needs to go out to all 550 community members who really did the heavy lifting that day. So just wanted to provide that quick update. We're 11 years in with Prescott Creeks leading the event. We're looking forward to another 11, see if we can keep our average age down, but we'll do what we can. So if folks have questions, if we've got time for that, I'm more than happy to, to respond to any.
Councilwoman Blair?
Well, you asked for history. And 1979, when I graduated from ASU, I was working for the state of Arizona. I came up to Prescott as a state employee in charge of 15 kids ages 15 to 24. At the time, Bob Heck, who was a city engineer, and I was a park designer, we put in the planners, we put in the bathrooms, and the first cleanup was done in 1980 by the city of Prescott employees as well as clubs and organizations. So to fill in your number, 1980 was the date.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Lizelle?
Thank you, Mayor.
Michael, I just want to say thank you. It's organizations like yours and George's and Joe and us and the city and citizens that were able to do a lot with not a lot of money, but a lot of results. But thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilcox?
I too wanted to say thank you for your leadership in the Prescott Creeks organization. I know you've been there for a long time, and we can do a lot more together, the city and Prescott Creeks. There are ideas for slowing down sediment to get into the lakes, projects like that that we can work together on. The cleanups are wonderful, and they really make a huge difference. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it. Any other questions and comments from the council? Well, I know the council thanks you, and I know the public thanks you, and looking forward to helping you out next year. Maybe I'll be able to attend. All right. Sounds good. We'll let you know. All right. Thank you again. Okay, we'll move on to consent agenda. We'll pull Items C and J for additional explanation and questions.
Mayor, I'm, I wanted to pull J, but I'm fine with not, with leaving it.
Okay, just pull C then.
Consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes for the city council meetings held on April 25, 2017. Item B, approval of payment to the OCLC Incorporated in the amount of $19,500 for fiscal year 2017 annual shared library bibliographic records subscription. Item C, adoption of Resolution Number 4381-1590, approving an intergovernmental agreement with Yavapai College for the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy. Item D, approval of final plat FP16-001 for Yavapai Hills Unit 9, Phase 5A, encompassing 72 lots on 49 acres. Property owner, YHD North LLC. Item E, awarded the multi-year contract for collision repair to downtown paint and body and preferred auto body in an annual estimated amount of $25,000 per year. Item F, adoption of ordinance number 5030-1568, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of city real property and grant a temporary construction easement to the state of Arizona, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said sale and granting of easement. Item G, adoption of ordinance number 5031-1569, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of ingress, egress easements to Arizona Eco Development LLC, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said sale and easement transactions. Item H, approval for the fire department to apply for various fiscal year 2018 grant funding opportunities. Item I, approval of city contract number- Item I, approval of city contract number 2017-301 with Titan Power to replace battery backup unit at Prescott Regional Communications Center in amount not to exceed $74,640.30 using Arizona State contract pricing. Item J, approval of city contract number 2017-298 with AmeriX Security to replace access control systems at various police department facilities in amount not to exceed $109,127.85 using Arizona State contract pricing. Item K, award of city contract number 2017-297 for the annual technical support and maintenance contract with Wonderware West for the SCADA software system for 2017-18 in the amount of $12,674.86. Item L, award of city contract number 2017-296 to Badger Meter for the purchase of Radio Read water meters in a total amount not to exceed $83,926 using City of Glendale cooperative pricing. And item M, assignment of city contract number 2017-167A1 with Farnsworth Wholesale Company to Fortline Incorporated for the purchase of water work supplies on an as-needed basis.
If no member of the council wants to pull any other items, do we have a motion?
Mayor, move to approve consent items A through M excluding item C.
Second. Okay, I got a vote. Second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
City manager, you want to explain a little bit about C?
Certainly, Mayor. Mayor and council, item C is an intergovernmental agreement between Yavapai College and the city of Prescott for an assigned sergeant for the Northern Arizona Regional Training Academy. And the college's percentage or actually total amount of money is about $163,000 and change. And historically, that amount has covered all the salary and benefits associated with the assigned sergeant. However, with the increased cost of PSPRS, the city is going to have to come up with some money to make up the difference because in the intergovernmental agreement, the cost of the contract can't go up more than 7% annually. So, our amount of money or contributions roughly $7,300 plus or minus. It's actually $7,263.16. So, as you talk about PSPRS consequences, this is actually one of them.
Councilwoman Orr?
I'm not sure who pulled the item. I just think it's important for the public to realize that the college is contributing $163,000, we're doing $7,000, but that this sergeant will be assigned full-time to the academy. However, he is available to the police department during times that there is not a current class in session for patrol coverage and other duties within the police department. I'd just like to make sure that everybody understands that.
That's 100% correct, Councilwoman Orr.
Councilman Sheska?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, I just want to straighten out in my mind. With NARDA, when we hire kids to, when we get kids to go through the academy, are they already hired by the city of Prescott?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to pass item C for approval.
Second.
Have motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll move on to item 10, liquor license agenda.
Mayor and council, there's one special event liquor license application on today's liquor license agenda. It's for a Series 15, a request by the Prescott Firefighters Charities. The application has been determined to be in compliance with city requirements and is being recommended for approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions, comments from the council? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to forward special liquor license application 10.8.1 to the Arizona State Liquor Board with the recommendation of approval.
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
Move on to regular agenda.
A, public hearing and adoption of resolution number 4384-1593 for the city of Prescott Community Block Development Grant, CDBG Program Draft Program Year Annual Action Plan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I am Darla Eastman. I'm the Community Development Block Grant Administrator. And today, I'd like to report on the activities, give you a quick recap of the requirements that we went through for the CDBG program and what we needed to do for this year's action plan. So, I'll just go over quickly what we did, and then I'd like to introduce our chairman after that and answer questions. So, the application process was announced in mid-December at local radio and newspapers. The, we had an application workshop, and that was January 11th of this year. Our first public hearing was March 15th, and that's where we had all the grantees come in and do their presentations, and we answer, we ask questions, and they answer. And then, let's see, then we had the CAC meeting again on the 22nd to go over the ranking and review process on that. And then, during, after that, we had a 30-day public review comment. So, that went out to the public, and it was available at the library, on our website, and out in the lobby. So, if folks wanted to comment on any of the projects, they were given that opportunity. That ran between April 6th and May 8th. There were, we didn't receive any comments on the document there. So, today is our third and final public hearing. So, this is to request that the council adopt and approve the plan, adopt the resolution and adopt the plan. Just to give you a little bit of information on the amount of the funding for the program, we had $233,755 for the year. There was also an additional $97,774 from the prior year funding. So, that went into the review process to fund those projects in that amount. So, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Jerry Jones, our chairman of the Citizens Advisory Committee. And if you have any questions, we can answer those.
Jerry doesn't want to come up.
I'm standing on the corner waiting on a bus. I didn't want to come up.
Come on up, Jerry.
She always wants this question part.
Oh, how do we do this?
Ten questions. Thank you. I'm glad.
Does anybody have any questions on any of the projects?
Questions, comments from the council?
Just thank you for your work.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks for your support. Appreciate it.
Any input from the public on the listing? I got a couple thumbs up, and I guess that's all we're going to get, so...
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 4384-1593.
Second.
Have motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on to item B.
Award of city contract number 2017-299 to Fan Contracting for the construction of the Acre Park Stormwater Detention Basin in the amount of $1,069,723.75. Approval to permit temporary rock-crushing activity within the Acre Park Stormwater Basin for the duration of 60 days.
Thank you. My name is Steve Arrows, Public Works Program Development Manager for the Capital Program. Wanted to explain a little bit more about this project. A couple of years ago, there was a Tenney Ranch subdivision that had some detention requirements. At the time, Public Works was already thinking about ways to develop a detention project in Acre Park to reduce the flood potential down in Virginia Wash. So, we developed an agreement with the developer to take the money that was going to be spent on a basin on-site to incorporate into a larger project, which has been completed design now. The goal of the project was to reduce the flood potential down in Virginia Wash, and we've been able to develop the design to reduce the flooding potential by about 50%, 5-0. It's going to be a really good improvement down there in that flood area. We have been coordinating this project with the Acre Trust Board because we're in the park, and they have unanimously approved the project. They walked the site with us, and we're all on board there. The second part of this project came about during our pre-award conference with the contractor that suggested a way to minimize the material moving off the site would be to possibly crush the rock that exists in that area, to reuse it within the berm that's required to build the berm. So, it's a win-win, and we are bringing that forward to you today in the second part of the motion because it's part of the project. This project was publicly bid in April 2nd and 9th. We had a pre-bid conference on the 14th, I'm sorry, the 11th, and then on the 20th, we received four bids for the project with Fan Contracting being the low apparent bidder. We have reviewed their bid and other qualifications and found it to be responsive and balanced, and we're recommending that the council award the low bid amount of the $1,069,723.75. The schedule, we want to move fairly quickly on this because we do want to get the majority of the project done before monsoon season. So, we'll be looking to get started in about a week with the contract of the contractors ready to go. The funding for the project is a combination of the developer contribution, Yavapai County Flood Control funding, and the balance from the Streets Fund. And the rock-crushing is a no-cost item changed to the contract. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Questions, comments from the council? Any from the public? Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2017-299.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, I move to approve temporary rock-crushing activity for more than 60 days.
Second.
And a motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item C?
Award of city contract 2017-287 to Fan Contracting, Inc., for the Chino Valley 5 Million Gallon Water Tank Project in the amount of $3,476,232.
Great. Thank you. In an effort to improve the water system for the city, the production facility that's located up in the town of Chino Valley, there is an existing 5 million gallon tank right now that facilitates the coordination of the wells up there and getting the water to Prescott. On a peak day, our water demand reaches upwards of 11 million gallons a day. So, that tank fills up, drains, and fills up again in a day. And in an effort to improve the reliability of our water system, increase the capacity, redundancy, and ability to maintain our system, a second 5 million gallon tank was designed and is needed to improve the water system. It's a real, going to be a real asset for utilities. Again, it was, this project was bid in April. We did receive two bids on the project, Fan Contracting being the low bid on the project. The, again, the contribution of the bid's been reviewed, and the bid's been found responsive and balanced, and we're recommending the award of the low bid today. The project is about a six, seven-month design, or I'm sorry, construction project, and we're looking to get started here in the next couple of weeks and be done by the end of the calendar year. So, it'll be operational for next peak season. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Questions, comments from the council?
Yep.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Steve, I'm curious about the $2 million discrepancy between the low bid and the engineer's estimate, which is actually $2.5 million higher. What happened there?
Well, it's, we liked the direction it went, first of all.
Yeah, I do, too.
The major component of this project was the tank. The grading and the minor piping was a small component of the project. The preliminary estimate we got from the tank manufacturers was higher during our design process, and when the competitive bid process did its work, we were beneficiary of a very good competitive tank price.
Good job.
Thank you. We try.
Councilwoman Blair?
Yeah, I guess just a simple question for, of technology. How, once that is installed, how do those tanks function? Do they function independently, or they going to be tied together? I mean, as far as not having water sit in one tank opposed to the other, how does that water move?
The super-technical things, Craig Doncet, who's here, do you want to answer that? He's the utilities manager and knows how those tanks are going to operate.
Not many people want to know that, but I do, and I appreciate it.
We have it designed so the tanks will be able to be run in series, parallel, or independently.
Okay. So, who decides how that runs? Certainly not the council. We can't make a decision to save us, but go ahead.
Running independently will be like when we're doing maintenance on the existing tank. So, then, we'll be able to run just this new tank. Otherwise, we'll primarily be running in series so that we do not end up with age water, water age issues, and to maintain the best water quality.
Good, thank you. That's what I was hoping for because I think the public enjoys the water that we have, and that's a good way to keep the quality up. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Any from the public?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2017-287.
Second.
Yeah, motion, a second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item D?
Thank you very much.
Adoption of resolution 4380-1589, canceling a suspending resolution number 4368-1577 to award the water management and calendar year 2017 alternative water allocations policy.
Mayor and council, the amendment before you today will, as you know, revise the unit allocations of alternative water to residential development. And as has been discussed several times, the objective is to reconcile the actual usage of this renewable resource with the quantities that we're setting aside to serve new development at the time the housing is approved. Secondly, by that reconciliation, we will be able to more efficiently use the limited amount of alternative water we have remaining, which will make available more unreserved alternative water to non-residential economic development projects. So, it's kind of a win-win. As pointed out in the agenda memo, the quantity of alternative water that has been accrued to date, representing the difference between the conservative quantities of water being, which have been allocated over the last 15 years, and the actual usage, that has accrued to about 410 acre-feet, which is a substantial quantity of water. And our specific recommendation with respect to that quantity is that it remain in the water portfolio and not be used to support additional development. So, that would be a cushion, if you will, for various circumstances that can and no doubt will happen in the longer-term future. So, in the agenda memo before you, there are really two categories of actions. Number one are several actions to be taken at this time, and then there are some actions for which we are recommending further analysis and subsequent action. Amendment 1, which is the policy, it's, I don't know, 20 pages or whatever it is, with the principal changes highlighted, that does include all of the actions that are being recommended at this time. The other topics that we are proposing be further analyzed and acted upon after subsequent discussion were identified in the April 25 study session. And specifically, those are rainwater harvesting, impact fees, and water rates, and those topics are addressed in the agenda memorandum. Specifically, with respect to rainwater harvesting, we think that there needs to be additional dialogue, but we're also recommending that that dialogue happen within a specific period of time, 60 days. of time, 60 days, and that it be brought back after being discussed by the Water Issues Committee back to the council. So it would not be open-ended. It would be, in fact, the opposite. One other item, or one final item that was not presented at the April 25 study session, but which is mentioned in the council agenda memo and highlighted in the attached amended water management policy pertains to new apartment projects. And so what you did not see on April 25 at the study session is this highlighted wording of what is now Policy 16. The Water Resource Management Division brought this to the Water Issues Committee, recommending that this language be included in the amended policy to provide flexibility to the council. Specifically, that on a case-by-case basis, the council would be able to consider other apartment projects and approve an allocation of alternative water, assuming that there is water, alternative water available, for each other project upon which the council makes a finding of particular community benefit. So there's quite a bit of discussion of this at the Water Issues Committee. I won't summarize that discussion other than to say that the end result was the committee voted to recommend the policy to the council. Basically, this was inserted because if a project, no matter how good this project might be, came in, had particular merit, the policy that's in effect now and what you saw on April 25 would not allow or enable the council to even address that policy. And there are some potential projects out there, particularly if the council approves this change in the unit allocations of residential alternative water. There are perhaps some projects out there which might come in between now and the end of the year that the council may want to listen to and think about and consider and have the flexibility to actually act upon those projects rather than say, "Well, we'll see in 2018." So we're recommending that that be, that particular language be inserted. So with this introduction and following any council comments and remarks, we'd recommend, Mayor, that public comments be accepted, followed by adoption of Resolution Number
Thank you, Craig. Councilman Blair?
Yes, Mr. McConnell, did, maybe I missed it. Did you make reference on how long this policy would be in place?
This policy, actually, on the cover of the policy, it would begin on today's date and extend through, let's see if I have a copy of the actual cover here, May 9, 2017 to December 31 of 2020. So you recall that back in December of 2016, the council adopted it as a multi-year policy, within each year of which the council sets a water budget and makes any other changes deemed necessary.
Okay. I just wanted that to be read, and for the record, I think it's important.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McConnell, do you know what the total amount of water consumption is for 2010 to 2015? You have listed the consumption for single-family and multifamily, but do we have a total for the entire?
I guess we'd need a little clarification. The total amount consumed?
Yeah. You talk about using an average of .17 acre-feet residences, and yes, consumption.
We'd have to get the actual gallon figure or acre-foot figure for you. Be glad to do that, provide to you the council memorandum.
Okay. Second question is about the cushion. It's kind of an interesting word. Why do we need a cushion if we don't have an anticipated use for it?
Well, it, you know, one word is cushion, another word is headroom. Headroom, I think, is more commonly used, being a difference between one quantity and the other. And if you run into peaks which are above normal, then, you know, that headroom is available for that peak. And, you know, we do, in fact, have a maximum annual amount of water that this city can use. And so by having a band or headroom or flexibility or cushion, then we can make sure that even, you know, in a sequence of dry years or succession in dry years or other circumstances which may occur, we'll have assurance that we will not be exceeding what the Arizona Department of Water Resources has identified as a maximum.
Okay, like a savings account.
Yeah.
Third question, maybe this is really just a suggestion for the Water Resources, Water Issues Committee and your division to consider. For people who choose to build a rainwater harvesting system when they're building a new house, couldn't we treat them similarly to those, to the water efficient developments by creating another higher tier? In other words, if they're not using their rainwater system and they're using the city water, and they go above that tier, they're going to feel it in the pocket. So it's an incentive for them to use their rainwater harvesting system.
Well, I guess, and these are some of the nuances that we would get into, and what I would propose to do is address that question when we come back with specific recommendations. But we can have any number of scenarios about, did they get a rebate and didn't use it then? Or if we create, as was proposed, looking at a lower unit allocation for homes which have rainwater harvesting and they don't use the rainwater harvesting, how does that work? So I think that perhaps the time we'd like to bring that back is within the 60 days and address that with the other considerations.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ohr?
Craig, thank you for your presentation. It's really good to have the data to know actually what the actual amount is that houses and apartments are using. Could you explain again, you were talking about 410 acre-feet?
Over, let's say, it's really about the last 15 years. Over the last 15 years, actually since the year 2000, the city has allocated alternative water, with that specific meaning, at unit allocations of .35 acre-foot per single-family residence.
Let me stop you there. How did that get, where did that number come from, the .35 and the .25? How was that established?
It was based upon two items.
Okay.
The first item was gallons per capita per day, about 150 gallons per capita per day. And the second was based upon occupancy of each of the dwelling types. So those were the two variables. And so back in the year 2000, 150 gallons per capita per day looked pretty good. But if you, you may recall from the chart which we put up at the study session on April 25, that 150 has been trending down to more like 120 and is still falling. So that's one thing. The other thing is with our demographics, the assumed persons per household has also been decreasing.
Sure, okay. And then the 410?
Pardon me?
The 410?
Yeah. And so since the year 2000, you know, with those assumptions at that time, we created, the city created, and these unit allocations for residential development were not out-of-line with comparable communities. And so that's what we, for 15, over 15 years, we've been allocating, but the actual usage, as pointed out, has been much less than that, substantially less than that. So you could look at it, for every residential unit that has been brought online and occupied and is using water, there's a incremental difference between how much we said we might use conservatively and how much was actually used, and that has all added up to 410 acre-feet.
So you're saying that you're recommending that, is this like going into a reserve?
Well, it stays within the portfolio.
Right.
Right. We're not reserving it, we're not identifying it for any use. It's a savings, as Councilwoman Wilcox said, it's kind of a savings in your account that you put away for a rainy day, and you never know when you're going to need it.
So is this the amount, then, that you're saying on page 13, that it's highlighted, that we will then make decisions about how that might be used if projects come up, or no?
No, the Policy 16, are we talking about Policy 16 now?
Yeah, Policy 16.
No, that specifically with respect, or specifically pertains to the current policy and procedure, which is that a developer, a property owner, can bring in an application for an apartment project. The city presently will accept that application but take no action. The effect of Policy 16 change would be that the city would accept the application, but if, in fact, that person or party submitting the application claims that there is a particular community benefit, then that application can be run through Water Issues and up to the council. And of course, you know, they would have to state what that community or, you know, what that particular community benefit is. But without that case-by-case basis and this policy changes, change, the council's precluded unless you want to come back at a future date. And sometimes the timing of that does not work.
Right. Thank you, yeah.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Craig, not to put you on the spot because it's not my intent, and I know Leslie's not here to help bail us out here. I guess my question is this, and it's always been the exact same question I've had for the 14 years I've been sitting in this chair, okay? Our annual consumption, actual consumption, if that's a good word, keeping in mind that we also have an annual recharge, both artificially and naturally, that we stress, strive to achieve, our annual consumption doesn't ever meet the exact amount of water or close to the exact amount of water that we're allowed by law to withdraw. And the fact of the matter is, this community has done a tremendous job in not so-called consuming, if that's the right word. I think consuming, once you've done it, it's gone. In our case, it's not gone because we're recharging. So, I mean, what we're doing is we're using. So could you just remember a little bit, aren't we withdrawing somewhere about, I don't know, X amount of acre-feet a year, and aren't we putting back in X amount of acre-feet a year? And don't we have the legal authority to withdraw X amount of acre-feet a year? We're not even close.
Well, if Leslie was here, here's what Leslie might say. She would probably first put this diagram because she's the person that compiled this diagram, and this is a summary of the city's 2009 decision order issued by the Arizona Department of Water Resources. And this presents the totality in the blue box of the city of Prescott water portfolio. And Mayor Protem, as you point out, 24,574 acre-feet is a lot of water. We don't come close to using that. We're more like, you know, we pump, Craig Doncet's still here? No, he's gone. I think that, well, let me just break this down further. You can't read it. This is brown and this is groundwater, and 9,400 acre-feet of that is groundwater. Okay. What we know about groundwater is that there are a lot of unbuilt lots that were recognized officially by the state of Arizona in 1998, and groundwater was grandfathered for those lots. So when those lots, when residences are built on those lots, then the water that's available comes from this brown part of the diagram. So Mayor Protem, there's a considerable amount of those unbuilt lots which are grandfathered in 98, so that's one major reason, you know, why the difference between the total amount which is authorized and the total amount pumped and used is so substantial. The other, or the block next to it, is alternative water, which we're really discussing today. And that alternative water, of course, is a renewable resource, but even though our unreserved quantity of alternative water is dwindling, there are substantial amounts of water which have been allocated to unbuilt plats, some of which will expire, some of won't, and there is a considerable amount of water, almost 1,000 acre-feet, it was 950 acre-feet, which was provided to the Deepwell Ranch in a water settlement. And so, again, there are a lot of lots out there, or potential lots, that would be served from alternative water, which are not built and not consuming, so that's a second major source of difference there. So I think that that's pretty much it, that there are a lot of lots, either existing or prospective, from either grandfathered groundwater or alternative water, that have not been built. The total or maximum cap is recognized, identified as 24,000, but the actual usage in natural pumping in the year 2017 is substantially lower.
Thank you. I think it's incumbent upon us to continually point out to the public in these public forums that indeed, while we may have the authorization to extract X amount of acre-feet out of the ground, some of that water will probably never be extracted because some of those lots will never be built on. And the topographical conditions in the city will probably never allow some of this stuff that water was grandfathered for to be used. So we've done a good job of managing our water. I'm very proud of the way we've managed our water. And you know, if you remember correctly, we were graced with an X amount, X amount of acre-feet of alternative water, and it was expected that that water would only last about five years. Well, we're in year 14 right now, so we've done a good job. We haven't just gone out there and drank it all up, so I just want to share it.
And one addition to that, when, you know, and water is obviously something which is very important, and for many, it's confusing. It has a different terminology, there are all these charts and things like that. But when a reasonable person asks a reasonable question, where is all the water going to come from to implement the general plan? The answer is right here. It's effectively already vested. It's here.
Councilman Chisca?
Thank you, Mayor. Craig, could you just go over for the benefit of the people who don't have a chance to come to Water Issues about the commercial set aside and how we're treating that differently now than we have for the last 15 years?
Well, for the last 15 years, commercial development was treated differently than residential development. And the primary way in which it was treated differently was that for relatively minor, and I'm not going to define that with an exact number other than being less than 5 acre-feet of annual water demand, relatively minor amounts of water that would be used to support new businesses were, you know, that water was set aside by marking up the unit allocations for residential. So instead of .25 acre-foot for a single-family residential unit, the city allocated or set aside .35, marked it up by a tenth. And so that's another source of accumulation there, that .1. With respect to major commercial development, any commercial development over 5 acre-feet, which could be a big box or, you know, of some type, some very larger water user, that required and still does require a water service agreement that is approved by the city council. Also, all commercial subdivisions. Now, a commercial subdivision does not mean a tract of commercially zoned Now, a commercial subdivision does not mean a tract of commercially zoned and used land that's not broken up into particularly, into individually owned parcels. But a commercial subdivision also requires an assured water supply. So residential over here, we have been allocating or providing water for every residential unit, single-family or multifamily. Commercial over here, relatively small water users from that 1/10 markup in residential, more substantial water users over five on individual water service agreement, which has to come to the council. And any commercial subdivision which comes to the council also has to have an assured water supply, which at this time would come out of alternative water.
Okay. So ultimately, what we're doing with that .1 is we are kind of looking at it in a different way, right?
We are, Councilman Chisca. We are recommending that the city, through the city council, look at it in a different way, because I think, as I recall pointing out on April 25th, a substantial amount of commercial infrastructure has been constructed. The supermarkets, the big boxes and things like that, which still have capacity. So why would we use this dwindling resource to set aside more when we have all this remaining capacity? I would suggest that the population of this city could increase substantially, and, you know, the market's the market. There are niche businesses, there are businesses which come kind of from nowhere and so forth, but the backbone, commercial structure of this community, there's enough capacity there to service for a substantial population increase. So it does not make sense to, at least the Water Resource Management Division, that we keep setting aside more water for more commercial infrastructure when we already have substantial capacity.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council for the council? Any from the public?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Howard Mechanic, Prescott. I first had a question for Mr. McConnell. I appreciate him making himself available for a discussion after the last meeting to go over some details. You mentioned three items that need to be dealt with later. You did not mention a study of possible code changes regarding multifamily requirements for meters. Is that something that's still going to be considered in the future?
Yes, I did not, yeah, I did, or I did identify some specific items, rainwater harvesting and other items under the heading metering and fees. But under metering and fees, it is our recommendation that we bring to the council for potential enactment of code amendments pertaining to individual metering and customer accounts.
I appreciate that, because I think if somebody puts in a fourplex or eightplex in my discussion with Mr. McConnell, his position is that those small multifamily developments may not use a lot less, they may use more per unit than larger multifamily. What I'm saying is if there's a 50-unit multifamily, there'd probably be smaller units. And maybe if there's a fourplex or eightplex, I think what you're saying is they may be larger units, they may be more like townhomes, and they may use more water. So maybe you're not going to give them a lower amount of water per unit. But that's different than requiring them to have meters. I think a fourplex should have individual meters, or eightplex should have individual meters, even though they won't be considered a water-efficient development. So that needs to be studied. I don't think that's going to be decided tonight, but that's something that's going to be discussed. What timeframe do you think the city will address this discussion about possible requirements for summer-all multifamily to have individual meters?
Let me see here.
Do you think that'll be dealt with this year?
Well, two things, there are impact fees, codes, and rates.
I'm just talking about the impact, I'm just talking, I'm not talking about the impact fees or rates. I'm talking about, I know those have to wait, because you have future studies already scheduled for impact fees in the future, and a study for the rates in the future. As far as the code changes, there's no, we don't have to wait for a schedule for that. So do you think that would be dealt with by the end of the year?
I would propose that we do that.
Sure. Thank you.
Next.
Question real quick. And with what Mr. Mechanic's saying, you know, I can see some credibility to looking at the different meters, but I don't see how we would ever take the attitude that a developer's got to meter each one of those apartments and pay an impact fee for each meter. So there would have to be a subset of meters that may have a master meter on it. Well, I mean, if you're talking about doing affordable housing, and then you're trying to have the developer pay another cost of another meter for each one of those units, I think is wrong. But I think a way to do that would be technology to be able to track the water from each one of those, for billing purposes.
Right, Councilman, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Mechanic, he's present, and certainly his comments and remarks were attached as the last page of the packet. But what he pointed out in his remarks was that multifamily units should be separately metered, which does not mean individual city meters, but the common practice is submetering. That is, that there's a master meter on the complex, and then it's submetered, and there is state law which pertains to that.
I'm suggesting the exact opposite.
And Mayor, I'm thinking this is sort of beyond the scope of this particular topic. If we're going to talk about metering, I think we should, you know, and code changes, I think that's, that is more appropriately agendized for, you know, when that's agendized, when we're doing, when we're doing, when we're talking about code amendments and those kinds of things. So I think we need to kind of keep it focused on the topic today, not some potential future item that hasn't been agendized yet.
Okay. Can I just take 20 seconds just to clarify? I was not proposing that they pay higher impact fees if they have individual meters. They should have lower impact fees as a total for the whole unit, because it will be justified that they will use probably 15% less water, and therefore the impact fees should be justified. But that needs to be studied.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council, for allowing feedback on this issue. My name is Carol Benedict. I'm the executive director for U.S. Vets. For those, just to familiarize yourself, U.S. Vets has been providing homeless services and housing to homeless veterans in Prescott for 14 years. So as--
Mr. McConnell.
Thank you. Mr. McConnell stated, the amendment would allow case-by-case review of special projects that could substantially benefit the community. As an example of that, U.S. Vets has an application last month to the Water Issues Committee. Oftentimes, at the end of the fiscal year, the state decides it needs to dump a lot of money. And this year, it's decided it needs to dump the Housing Trust Fund money, which is $9 million, for permanent supportive housing units for homeless people. So U.S. Vets has the potential to have a grant opportunity for 60 permanent supportive housing units here in Prescott for homeless and low-income housing, not affordable housing, low-income housing, which is nearly nonexistent here at all. In addition to our rental capacity is at 98%. So right now, as it stands, our application with the Water Issues Committee is dead in the water, because it can't be considered, even though it would offer substantial benefit to the community as a whole in housing 60 or more homeless individuals. This grant also requires onsite food pantry, onsite services, workforce development, you know, ancillary services that would greatly benefit the homeless community here in Prescott. So I would really encourage the, an appeal to the council to approve this measure as it's submitted. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Daniel Mattson. I live here in Prescott. I was very involved in the general plan, as you guys all know. I just wanted to point out, for anyone who doesn't understand, this is basically about an accounting procedure. It's about legal water, and we have wet water also. So I suggest that we do pass this so that we more accurately account for what water we are allocating. But please let us keep in mind, and I'm amazed that Howard Mechanic didn't say safe yield. We should definitely work on the, in fact, not only rainwater harvesting, but we should consider the idea of macro rainwater harvesting, and, but this should be approved, especially when it throws in this provision in Policy 16 that would allow U.S. Vets to move forward. But let us please not forget that legal water and wet water are not the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Judith Merrill, and I live on Siri Peaks Drive, 86305. I get confused listening to this, talk about it, and he just addressed it so nicely, this last man who spoke. We talk about water as though it really exists, but it doesn't exist, and we can allocate it all we want. We can say it's for this purpose or for this purpose, and then we save water this way. But there's only so much water. And the fact that we talk about saving it and using it for other things, and we're accumulating it because we're not using as much, doesn't change the fact that there's only so much water in the ground, and we don't know how much water is there. And I've read a lot of comments about wells to the north of here running dry, and that we aren't meeting our recharge obligations. And so I hope that whatever you do will not exacerbate these problems, will not let you think that there's more water, because there's not more wet water, as he defines. I really think it's wonderful that part of this is, part of this proposal, as far as I understand it from reading the paper, is that you will require new apartments and others to build using--
Low-water features, yeah.
Using low-water features. Thank you very much for giving my presentation, because that's just a, that's just a no-brainer. We should require that for absolutely everything, I think. And so part of this, I really, really approve of it, but I want you to just remember that the amount of water hasn't changed, and that in your proposals, you don't just pretend that he's got so many hundred acre feet of new water, because it just isn't there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I recommend--
Can I just respond to a statement made there? Mr. McConnell, I'd like you to respond to it. Are we meeting our required recharge responsibilities?
Well, Mayor Protem, Mayor and Council, what I didn't repeat at the outset today, although I touched upon it, but to be very clear, today we are talking about alternative water, which has a very specific definition, as distinct from groundwater. Alternative water is a category of renewable resource. So there are estimates made of this renewable resource. Those estimates are submitted to Arizona Department of Water Resources. They look at that, and they come back and they say, okay, you are authorized in this document called a decision and order to have available, for whatever municipal purposes you want, alternative water in the following quantity. And that's what we're talking about specifically today. It's renewable resource, and there are two principal sources of this renewable resource. The first is surface water, which is impounded in the Watson and Willa Lake reservoirs, recharged and then recovered. The second is treated wastewater effluent from our wastewater treatment plants that is treated to legal standards and requirements. It is also recharged at the airport, and is also recovered. So those are the renewable resources which we are talking about today. They are not related to wells in Paulden and other places with, these are renewable resources from those two particular sources. Period.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilcox.
I think Judith Merrill kind of hit the nail on the head, and I'd like to ask you to respond to her statement. Do we know how much water is in the Little Chino water basin?
No one knows definitively. There have been estimates that have been made. And, you know, the Arizona Department of Water Resources has made estimates. They have formulated management plans for the Prescott Active Management Area, and created goals and strategies for reaching safe yield. And there are variables in that, which is probably, and that whole topic is probably best, you know, best discussed when Leslie is here on another day. But no one knows for sure. That's really the bottom line. In the meantime, it's our job, and I think it has been aptly pointed out today, it's our job to be responsible. We are not maxed out. We are not built out. There is still considerable headroom or cushion, or whatever you want to call it, and, you know, I think we're doing a great job, as the Mayor Protem said.
Any other questions, Council for the council? Do you have a motion?
Mayor moves to adopt Resolution Number 4380-1589.
Second. Yeah, motion, second vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Item E.
City council meeting schedule for June 2017. Mayor and Council, this item is presented for approval of a revised city council meeting schedule for June. The council's rules of procedure requires a majority of the council to determine if a regularly scheduled meeting can be held on a different day. Mayor Oberg has requested that the June 13 council meeting be moved to Thursday, June 15, as he will be unable to attend the June 13 meeting due to his requested attendance at the Zeitz Germany Sister Cities function. June 13 is the discussion for the tentative budget, and he would like to be able to be back in time for that discussion. So the proposal is to hold the regularly scheduled study session and voting meetings on June 15, Thursday, instead of Tuesday, June 13. And then the June 27 council meetings will be held at their regularly scheduled day. So if you have any questions, you can--
Questions, comments? It looks like Councilwoman Wilcox.
Well, I think the public has an expectation that our regular meetings be held on Tuesday, and we should stick with that. Some of us, including myself, have already made plans to be elsewhere, and mine is a business reason as well, so I will not be able to attend the afternoon Thursday, June 15. That's why I would like to see the schedule remain on Thursday.
Any other questions, comments? Any from the council, I mean, from the public? Do you have a motion?
Mayor, I move we approve the revised city council meeting schedule for June 2017, as set forth in the council agenda memo.
Second. Do you have motion, second vote, please?
Passes 5 to 2, Councilwoman Wilcox and Councilwoman Lozelle DeSenti.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'll close with my noble statement. This is Thomas Payne. Those who expect to reap the blessings of freedom must, like men, undergo the fatigue of supporting it. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for attending.